Hello, everybody. This is the work session for the Board of Mayor and Alderman for March the 10th, 2020. The next item on the agenda is an opportunity for citizens to make comments that are on items not on the agenda and have no speaker cards. So we'll move right on to the event permit for Main Street Festival sponsored by the Heritage Foundation on April 25th through 26, 2020. They're back on the back row if there's any questions or comments.
Great, great evening. I have no questions.
Oh. What it does.
Rain.
2018 was the year of rain. Like virtually every event.
So we'll keep moving on. So we'll go to Resolution 2019-111, a resolution approving a development plan for Downs Boulevard Properties, PUD subdivision with two modifications, development standards for the property located north of Downs Boulevard and west of Columbia Avenue on 2.68 acres located at 1536 Columbia Avenue. Planning Commission, February 27th, with a 9-0 vote.
Thank you.
Did you take away?
The applicant has submitted a development plan for the construction of a fueling station at this property. It is own planned district and is in the neighborhood mixed-use design concept as outlined in Envision Franklin and is also located in the Columbia Avenue Overlay Special Area 3. The proposed layout of placing the retail component at the rear of the property and the fuel canopy at the front along Columbia Avenue does not meet the recommendations of Envision Franklin or the Columbia Avenue Overlay District standards in the zoning ordinance. And I should say, this project was submitted under our previous zoning ordinance. So we just adopted one in December. So this is under our previous zoning ordinance. So for the modification of standards, the applicant is requesting to locate the canopy along Columbia Avenue with the retail component located on the side of the property. The proposed location at the front of the property along Columbia Avenue does not meet the regulations or the design of the previous zoning ordinance. Staff recommends denial of the first modifications of standards request. And for the second modification of standards, the applicant is requesting drive-through use component as part of the development plan for this property. And Section 3.4.7 FG2 of the previous zoning ordinance prohibits the use of drive-throughs in this location, NCAO 3. Staff recommends disapproval of both the development plan and the modification of standard requests. However, Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend the development plan as proposed, as well as approve both modification of standard requests.
Got any pictures?
Not on me. We have a map.
Any questions or comments? Alderman Peterson?
I do want to echo what was said that the Planning Commission recommended approval and recommended approval of the two modification of standards. And part of that was that this little piece of the Columbia Avenue overlay is really very small. And the idea was said, not only for the overlay but the other things, that this would be important to be pedestrian oriented. But in fact, well, now, there is a sidewalk on Fairgrounds Street. But I want to tell you, on Columbia Avenue, the closest sidewalk is up there like 2,000 feet away. And all those things that you see over on the right here, and also if you go on down on Downs Boulevard and come back up on the left, none of them have sidewalks. So if you were going to try to have this as pedestrian oriented, I mean, there are no sidewalks. They would be walking out in the street the entire time. And I don't want to say what the Planning Commission idea was, but there was some comment about that this really, as proposed, really fit in better than some of the things without the modification of standards.
I do want to note on the sidewalk, though, when you improve Columbia Avenue, you will be putting some sidewalk in place from Downs south.
That's right.
And on some areas on both sides, other areas just on, what, the west side there. So you will have sidewalk to the south of this site as part of the Columbia Avenue project.
Well, now, think about, though, what is south of this, over on the side that you're talking about? That is heavy industrial mostly. I mean, it's the Vulcan, you know? I mean, it's really not, I mean, I don't think they're going to sell the place.
And I just wanted to note that the current condition is not going to stay, especially as it relates to when you make the improvements in Columbia Avenue.
But whenever you're talking about getting from residential development there, that will really not have that effect at all. And so, as I say, again, I don't want to specifically say what the Planning Commission thought, but the discussion was that if you look at what's there now further south, I mean, it's, and really, just even to the, I guess, east right now, it's kind of commercial, you know? And really, from Fairgrounds to Downs is commercial already there. But as I say, I didn't want to make that because that was not stated here, that the Planning Commission also recommended approval of the modification of standards. Thank you.
Alderman Barnhill, then I've got Alderman Martin.
Well, there is, south of that is True Value. To the west of that would be many residential homes on Fairgrounds Street. There's nothing on Downs until you get another probably 3, 400 yards.
You've got sporadic sidewalk along Downs, where you've had new development or redevelopment. There has been sidewalk put in there.
Sidewalks put in.
Yeah.
On Downs?
As you go down Downs, in front of the strip malls that have been done there, those strip centers that have been done there, and the storage place, there's all sidewalks.
Sidewalks, yeah.
Well, if we're going to have an opportunity here with a public hearing for the people in the community, I would encourage the people in the neighborhood and community to come out and do in the public hearing for this.
Alderman Martin.
Joey, I hate to ask you to do this, but would you just quickly say what the Planning Commission denied, I mean, the staff denied?
Staff recommended disapproval of both the plan as proposed that included both modification of standards requests. So we recommended disapproval for all of it.
Say what the moment gets us.
Oh, the specific. The specific modification was to locate the canopy, the fuel canopy, at the rear of the property. And the second modification of standards was for the drive-through component of the project.
Did you have a suggestion for the movement of the canopy?
It's really the location of the fuel pumps, is the way I understand it. So this proposal puts the fuel pumps along Columbia. The standards would put it more recessed or back behind the building.
Yes.
So that's the primary difference, as I understand it.
Yes.
Okay.
It's both, as previous and the current.
And then the Planning Commission gave approval for which one?
They recommended approval for both the project overall, as well as both modification of standard requests. So both the location of the canopy and the use of the drive-through.
Okay. Thank you.
For approval, yes.
Item three, Resolution 2020-04, resolution authorizes the Planning Department in cooperation with the Parks Department on behalf of the Board of Mayor and Alderman to submit two applications to the State Historic Preservation Office for historic preservation fund grants to be used at the city cemetery and the historic haze house.
Thank you, Mayor. So we have the resolution before you. There are two grants. One is for artwork restoration at City Cemetery, which is around $9,000. And the second is to continue the work at the historic haze home for window restoration, which is around $24,500. So the total amount for the city would be around $13,000, which we have within our budget. Any questions?
Questions? Item four, City Franklin Contract 20, oh, that's the one I just did. Item five.
No, item four.
Item four, you're right, looked the same. 2020-0044, contract with a Hard Bargain Association for receipt of community development block grant funds from the City of Franklin as reimbursements for costs associated with construction of single-family homes that benefit low to moderate income residents.
And this is for a single-property, deed-restricted, affordable, single-family housing unit?
Lot 41 on Glass Street and Hard Bargain. Lot 41 on Glass Street and Hard Bargain has done their due diligence, including doing the, what's the word I'm looking for? Environmental, environmental research.
Questions? Go ahead.
This is fitting within the grant application and the grant purpose.
Grant application, and it's an infill, and it'll be one of the really cute cottage homes.
Okay. Continue to make us proud. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number five is resolution authorizing directing industrial development board of the City of Franklin to prepay a portion of its taxable rate, tax increment, revenue, refunding bonds. That's good news.
You should be familiar, we've been doing this for several years now, have Christine sort of walk through the components of this in terms of us paying down debt related to our tax increment financing district.
Yes, this is the fourth year that we've asked the Board to approve a prepayment on the 2015 TIF loan. This is a request to prepay $800,000. The property tax revenues in the district were $2,320,000 less estimated debt service of $1.4 million. We have, the difference is $876,000, and we're recommending prepayment of $800,000 on the loan. The variable rate loan was originally scheduled to end in 2025, and with our, including this $800,000 of prepayment, which gives us total prepayment of $2.7 million versus the original loan amount of $7,150,000. We'll have, current, we'll advance that final maturity to April of 2023. And then we certainly expect to come back to you next year. And we're converging on the end of that loan, probably in calendar year 2022. We will need to keep the TIF district in place for one more year to repay ourselves from the monies that we advanced early on in the program. But this resolution will allow prepayment of the loan before the end of this fiscal year.
So the city is owed about $2.4 million, so roughly the amount that it's generating in property tax in a year now is what we'll need to pay ourselves back before we retire the district, so.
It's just great.
Yeah, it's great news. We've moved it up. And as Christine said, from where we started, we'll move it up about three or four years by the time we get to the end, so.
Good news. Okay, item six, procurement award to Urgent Team Management of Tennessee LLC of Nashville, Tennessee, in a total annual estimated amount of $345,515 for near-site clinic healthcare services for the Human Resources Department for term of award.
We talked to you about this several months ago in terms of an opportunity to provide some additional healthcare services to our employees, their families, and retirees, other folks that are covered in our insurance program, and excited to bring forward a specific proposal. Kevin and Sarah are here to talk to you about it.
So we opened up this process January 9th, closed it February 11th. Five proposals were submitted. And again, it's for near-site clinic. Near-site, therefore, don't have to pay the cost of construction or the cost to maintain a dedicated facility. Why? Because other citizens can use the facility. The importance for us is that when the City of Franklin employees get to use it, one, this facility, well, the one we're talking about, Urgent Team, is one that we're submitting as who we should use. They already have what they call a save-my-spot app, which allows you to get in front of the line. Well, they're going to further enhance that by having a special process for City of Franklin employees. So even at the worst-case scenario, we're talking about, they usually have about a 15-minute wait, this will even decrease that. What can be used for would be, as Eric says, our employees that are on our health plan, retirees on our health plan, the dependents of our employees on our health plan. It could go there for family illnesses, urgent care, stitches. We can also open up for breath and alcohol testing, the city would want, drug testing for prospective employees, post-accident drug testing, random drug testing, worksite illnesses. So, and then also, I think I already said this, post offer pre-employment physicals for prospective employees. The team that we picked was Urgent Team, and that's at the location, you probably know, as a former Judge Bean location, formerly Mickey Ruse on Hills Grove. Oh, okay, very good. That's the site. The company itself, this company handles more than 500,000 patients per year. They have over 5,000 relationships with entities like ourselves, one of which being Walmart Transportation. Here in Middle Tennessee, the Franklin location is the one that would be our near-site clinic, but our employees could use any of their other 14 Middle Tennessee clinics. Let's see, hours of operation, they're open seven days a week, Monday through Friday, that's 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Saturday, that's 9:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. Sunday, 1:00 to 5:00. What am I leaving out here, Sarah?
Do you want to touch on the cost to employees?
I'll hit the cost. Oh, that's the biggest thing. How can I leave that out? The biggest thing is, and Sarah and I have had to do it before on her own and my own, I've cut my hand, had to go to Urgent Team. The smallest cost you're going to get is about $175. Here, every time an employee goes, it's $20. $20. That's it.
So the $20 does include the cost of the physician's visit, or the visit to the clinic, any x-rays that are needed, any in-house lab work? So the $20 is a flat fee per employee, and then the city, on the city's side, the city would pay per employee per month regardless of usage based on the tier that they're in?
Is that fluctuating?
It will fluctuate. So we anticipate paying that bill every month, so it would kind of lower and/or increase depending on who we hire or who leaves the City of Franklin.
After we approve this.
That's right. And they've been up and running since December of last year.
Yeah, our goal date is May 1st, just to get everything integrated with our systems and get information that they need from us.
So is anybody on the city health plan? Alderman Plan?
So is this, this is in addition to our Blue Cross Blue Shield, not instead of?
Correct.
And is it only meant for urgent care, or, you know what I mean? Like, if I need to go get my blood drawn, do I go around the corner to San Sebastian, or do I want to go? You see what I'm saying? How do you weigh your regular doctor versus using this facility?
Well, it's not just for urgent care, but it is for urgent care as well. But a lot of times, I've known my doctor since he was in the fourth grade, I was in the fifth, and I can't get in just like that.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. That's what nurse practitioners are for.
That's right.
It's a full-service clinic, so they'll be able to do blood draws, screenings, that kind of thing. And so it's cheaper on the employee's side, it's more economical, and it's more efficient for employees to go there.
So it's another option? I mean, they can still choose to go to their regular family doctor, or they could go here if there's a convenience or a timing issue for them. So it's just another option, and we think a pretty cost-effective option.
So the $345,000 that's attached to this agenda item pays for what?
Well, it's what we project the services need. So we've got dollars set aside for services to our, to our employees in the self-insured program. So this really would be drawn on those dollars for this use. So you're really, you know, they might otherwise have gone to some other provider. This is what we would have available to go to this, to this particular service.
But that is an annual amount projected?
That's projected, yeah.
Yeah, so the true, the flat cost is the per employee per month. So that's going to be roughly 315, 840. That's going to be like the most accurate cost. Everything else will kind of fluctuate based on the services that are provided or how many people are seen.
Alderman Berger?
Thanks, Sarah. The, you mentioned 14 other locations. Are they nearby?
I wouldn't say nearby, Murfreesboro, Nashville. No, they're not as close.
So there's, it's Montgomery County, Davidson County, and Rutherford County. So there's, like Kevin said, there's 14 locations, including the Franklin one. They are somewhat new to Tennessee, so we do see that they'll have more locations. So the save-my-spot works for all the clinics, but the save-my-spot for the Franklin location, there's an extra bump, so they can mark that they're a City of Franklin employee, and it puts them up even higher on the list.
Because what you're trying to do is reduce off-work time.
Missed work.
Yes, and, you know, streamline that for people to go in, get in, get out. You said they do stitches and things like that. So, okay, so I wanted to know that. And then, okay, less time off work. And then, has there been any savings projections done with this program versus if we didn't do it?
Well, I wouldn't want to say this is all about savings. It's really about increasing quality of care for our employees, but clearly, there's potential for savings. I think we're going to need 18 months of data to figure it out.
To really look back and measure it. Because I would think that some of the things you would take into consideration with this would be less time off work, missed work hours, convenience of it. Those things would add into the cost of offsetting those as well. So, yeah, I wouldn't think you'd really have that until you have a good test market time like 15, 16 months.
Yes, and they have the capability to run reports, so we'll be able to see, you know, after a year, 18 months, what that looks like, what our participation is, what the usage has been. So they have capabilities to do reports for us.
Okay, and then, is there, does this lock us into one year? I didn't see that.
It's a one-year.
One-year renewable?
One-year, four times for an additional year each time.
Okay, I thought I saw something in there. And let me ask you one other thing. What was that? When I looked in here, it says, you know, does the proposal take any exceptions? And they said, no, proposals, no exceptions taken. But people see confidentiality and proprietary rights for some of those other entities that bid on this. What does that mean?
Direct me where you're looking.
Well, it's under the second column, under the second column, and it says, take any, does the proposal take any exceptions to the city's procurement solicitation? What do they mean when they say yes, confidentiality and proprietary rights? What does that mean?
So we laid out what the city wanted in the proposal or the bid document, and some of those weren't met. There's like a checklist that each vendor can respond to, and some of them, they just didn't, they couldn't do it.
Oh, because they had confidentiality and proprietary rights to things that they couldn't answer.
Or they may have, they may have taken exception to our requirements and said, well, we don't do it the way you proposed it, but we do it this way. You'll note that the one we're recommending is, did not take exceptions. But, yeah, it depends, it's proposal by proposal. There are certain things, they said, you ask for this, we're doing it a little bit differently, or we're not going to do it the way you ask for. And they just hope that we'll be able to live with that exception.
Yeah, that lets us look and see what the exceptions there, they can be.
And I just want to comment real quick on the cost piece. I think at this point, we're really looking at it as cost-neutral, but providing another option for our folks, covered folks in our plan. But think there could be some potential that if you make it more convenient, you get care maybe more promptly, it could keep people healthier over the long run and maybe avoid some costs. But just giving us another good care option for our people.
I'd like to ask a question. Number one is, whenever our employees visit there, and most of them, this is, I mean, these are not, this is not going to be the primary care physician for our employees, but they have a policy as far as communicating with the primary care physician for our employees so that there's, say you go in and your blood pressure's high, and they give you some medicine. Then you go see your primary care doctor, and he has no idea what they've given them. So I'm just urging that there be some type of communication, make sure that they're getting continuous care.
Gotcha. I don't see that being a problem to make sure.
What can you verify that?
We'll make sure we follow up.
Yes, we will.
And then, also, what's the role as far as follow-up? If you have sutures for a laceration on your arm, are they going back to their primary care doctor, or are they going here? Or does it really matter?
It doesn't. We would suggest they go here, but it doesn't, if they prefer to go to the primary care, I don't see why we would say they couldn't do that.
And what relationship do they have to physician practices in the area? So that, say they see someone that's, has a more serious problem, and do they have that relationship in the medical community that they can easily access medical care? Are they tied to some other medical institution other than ours?
They did mention that people do come in sometimes and having things that cannot be seen by them. It's not urgent care, it should really be, right. And so they do, right now, they have a process where they get them seen by other places.
And if we could find out what that other places means, that's, that concerns me some because I want to make sure that our employees continue to be able to access their primary care doctor. You know, I have some concerns with it just strictly being a nurse practitioner that takes care of them. So I want to make sure that there is a good process as far as making sure that they're followed up with their primary care in their network.
Got it. Well, I can follow up with that.
Mayor Moore, were you asking, was that also a question about, do they refer?
Yeah, I think that is a question. Do they have a referral network? And what is their policy? We don't want to be sending our patients to Hendersonville, Tennessee, doctors. If you get to just what I'm saying, we want people to go where they want to and not be referred someplace that's not where they want to be.
Right. Well, the ones they talked about when we were there visiting, they were talking about within here in Franklin, emergency care, but I can still follow up to make sure.
Yeah.
Outside of emergency care, where do they send people?
How about capital high, highlight capital projects? We're going to look at Franklin Road.
Yes. One of the things we want to start doing periodically at work sessions where we have a little time, opportunity to do so, is give you a little more of a specific update on especially high-priority capital projects. And so some of it will show you a little bit what's on the website that we've developed recently to give project information. But Paul will also provide some other details. And as the mayor referred to, tonight, we're going to be focusing on the Franklin Road project, which is now out to bid. So Paul will take you through that. And like I said, we'll bring these back periodically and just hone in on a project, give you an update, answer any questions you might have about where we're going.
And just a heads up, we're going to spend no more than 15 minutes on this because we want 30 minutes allowed for number eight.
Okay, so what I was asked to do is quickly show you the project website before I get into what all goes into a capital project. So just as a reminder, if you go to the city So just as a reminder, if you go to the city's homepage, under engineering, you can get to the capital projects dashboard. Just click on this link right here. And it'll pull up this dashboard that gives you a ton of basic information on all the different projects. And as you can see, there's 31 projects that we have listed on this. And generally speaking, these are projects, not all of them, but generally speaking, are the ones that are fully funded, that we're really actively working on. Obviously, there's a lot of other projects in the CIP. And so today, what we're going to do is talk about the Franklin Road. So I'll just click on transportation to bring that list down. Oh, if I can hit the right project. Click on Franklin Road and then it just pulls up this little summary of just various information that you can see about the project. Our project managers are updating this monthly so that we can make sure we're pushing out the correct information to anyone who's interested. And then there's also a project link that can take you directly to the webpage that then gives you some information about that project. It also lists primary contact information. And for this project, William Banks is our project manager. He's the one taking the day-to-day lead on trying to help us deliver this project. And he's, he's done a lot of our streetscape projects.
Other thing you'll see on this, as you scroll down, you'll see documents that were presented at public meetings related to this project. You may remember we did some design review later in 2018 as we were leading into this project. So that'll give you some, some historical documents when you look at some of the capital projects as well.
So we do our best to keep this updated so that people can be engaged and know what's going on. So what really goes into a project? I was asked to pick a project and just going to walk through that as to why it takes so long to deliver and some of the challenges that we have and how complicated they could get. And so William helped me throw together a few slides just to show some of the challenges. And what we'll hit is kind of project overview. I know you all are very familiar with Franklin Road. But for those in the audience who are watching at home, just a general overview of the project. Talk a little bit about what goes into the project development phase of it, the utility coordination, the property acquisition, and then dealing with the regulating authorities or the obtaining permits from the appropriate individuals. And so Franklin Road, just as a reminder again, is from the Harpeth River Bridge up to Harpeth Industrial Court, essentially taking the two-lane road to three lanes, adding sidewalks, streetlights. We are replacing a ton of utilities. This is a big infrastructure job. But when we get done with it, we're going to do some enhancements to the street just because it is that gateway into our community. So we condensed it down to this, very simple project phasing. Every project is different and have different unique parts of it. But you usually start with some type of preliminary design, environmental, to really try to understand what you're getting into, what we need to do to get the project done. We then do farther into the preliminary design with utility coordination and then go out for easement acquisition. Ultimately, you get into final design and then you go into construction. And so with Franklin Road, right now, we're out to bid, so we're excited about that. There's still a lot of moving pieces to the project that we need to get completed and we're happy to be moving this forward. So this is, just in comparison, this is TDOT's flow chart for a locally managed project. So when we start adding federal funds to the process, they'll tell you it can take at, at a minimum five years to deliver some of their projects. They are very complicated when you accept their funding. There's lots of different checking points. Luckily, on Franklin Road, we don't have that issue. And so we're able to move it more efficiently. Franklin Road does have other challenges associated with it. Utility coordination is a huge deal when we're developing these roadways and trying to do our planning for projects. And on this one, the big challenge is we're taking all the overhead power in utilities and trying to put them underground. We are dealing with a substantial amount of utilities. Zayo, CenturyLink, AT&amp;T, Atmos, Exo, Windstream, Middle Tennessee Electric, Comcast, not to mention our own water sewer and our own utility or communication infrastructure. And we got to figure out how to fit that all in the right of way. We got to figure out how to do that and not impact property owners. And this is a huge part. And we got to get them to all play ball with us too, to, to help, help with the project. So one of the big challenges during construction, when people say, why is it taking so long? We actually have to build the infrastructure first while maintaining service, then take it all off those overhead poles, get it in here, then reconnect them up before we can even take down the poles that are in our way of sidewalk, storm drainage, sewer, all the things that we want to do. So it, it's just extremely challenging and it takes a lot of time, especially when you're taking those overhead utilities and trying to underground them. That makes it extremely difficult. So with this project, ultimately, we try to get the utilities to a point in which we're very confident that not a lot's going to change. I will tell you that the utilities will continuously change up until the day we finish the project and the bulldozers and the equipment leaves the site. And the utility companies will continue to request those changes. And we'll continuously find new things that weren't picked up on the survey or weren't located properly. Those issues tend to happen. So on this project, we got into the property acquisition phase as a reminder. We held an initial public meeting. At that public meeting, there were no objections to the project. Everything was great. Then we staked the right of way. And when we staked the right of way, that's when we received that petition that y'all remember and went back to the drawing board to having more public meetings. Ultimately, on this job, we ended up taking a lot of the utilities that had been planned outside of the roadway and moved them inside the roadway. When you move one utility, and I don't care if it's two feet, five feet, when you start moving one utility, it is a domino effect and starts affecting everything. And so again, extremely challenging. So when we decided to move those utilities to try to accommodate these property owners, it, it resulted in about a year delay of time and cost associated with the project to re-engineer and rework the utilities. Now that said, I think we're going to end up with a better project because I think the utilities are better coordinated the way we have it. But it did have a substantial delay in the, in the job. So on this project, we had 32 properties. We had to do 32 appraisals, 32 title searches. And we were ultimately able to settle 23 out of those tracks or right-of-way agent was able to settle those. We had seven tracks had to go to condemnation. And then we still have two remaining tracks that are being negotiated by our law department through private attorneys that we're not allowed to interact with. Attorney to attorney usually handles that. So those are still outstanding. I know our law department is working extremely hard to get those done so that we can start. Some of those are critical to the project so that we can initially start moving a lot of the utilities. We were managed to settle 23 out of the 32. And on top of that, we also had to obtain a substantial number of Middle Tennessee Electric easements for their infrastructure as well. That's on top of ours. So once we finally get the utilities close, and I'm going to say close because they're, again, they're never finalized until the day the project's complete. They're always a moving target and changing. We then start going for the permits, which in this type of project here, we got to get a permit for discharge of our stormwater construction site from TDAC. It's called an MPDS permit. We also have to get a permit to build the public water supply or the sanitary sewer collection system. We have to get a permit from TDOT for grading in there right of way. We have to get, there were like 10 utility companies we're dealing with. So we have to get 10 utility permits, all individually cannot be submitted as one package from TDOT. And then we have to get a streetlight permit from TDOT to do that. And so we're working on a lot of those permits now. We usually wait till the end because the utilities are forever changing. And until we get through all the property negotiations, and even during property negotiations, a lot is changing. You know, they want to move a pole box 10 feet, five feet. And so it's, again, it's a challenge. That design is continuously evolving throughout that right-of-way acquisition process. So that's a high-level summary of the challenges that we face. These, we have a lot of projects, I think it was about 32 on the website, that are ongoing. We have a lot of people that work together to help deliver these projects. We take a lot of pride in trying to deliver those quickly, efficiently. But wanted you to just kind of understand a little better some of the challenges that we face in delivering these.
One of the things we're working on, on this project in particular, is trying to formulate some method to provide an incentive for early completion, meaning final acceptance of the project by a date specific. We're trying to work through exactly what that will look like. So when we bring that forward, there may be a separate component that provides some additional incentive to the contractor to reach final completion by a date certain. It would likely be outside of your con- your usual construction contract. That's what we're trying to look at and be creative about because we want to get on their radar to make our project a priority in completion by a certain date, a focus for their, their efforts. So it's something we're trying to be a little creative on and provide some, some way of getting the attention of the contractor that this is something they want to put a focus on and bring completion. Because sometimes our projects don't get the attention that we'd like them to because there's other work out there and they, they, they move resources around to try to complete. And our, our completion date may not be as important as something else where they think they may be able to, to profit more. So we want to get their attention through some, some form. Again, we're still working through what that might look like. But just wanted to share that with you, that that's something we're trying to be creative about and get, get an opportunity to complete projects a little more timely and incentivize that with our contractors we work with.
Will there be a sidewalk? Is that your question, Alderman Martin? Go ahead, Alderman Martin.
I just want to tell you that you deserve a great big bottle of aspirin. And I want to thank you very much for all of this stuff. I cannot imagine all this that you've gone through. And I ask you to forgive me for all the times I have attacked you.
There is a large group of us that work on this. It is not me, trust me, it's too much for me.
Well, I'll ask forgiveness from all of you.
We're working on it.
Say, I would just say that, and Margaret, you say this all the time too to people. And, you know, get ready to be miserable. And it impact, as you said, impacts all these property owners.
Yeah.
So.
In our department, we celebrate when the orange barrels go up.
Yeah.
Everybody loves a road project until you give them one.
But afterwards, they, they love it. Afterwards, it's all done.
I was in Columbia this week and their whole town is torn up because their main street is, and all of their sidewalks are gone. And the, and the street is torn up and people are just yelling and screaming. I said, just wait, it's going to be so wonderful. You're going to forget all about this. But they know what we're going through.
No other questions? We'll move on to presentation and training on the Civic Clerk Agenda Management System.
As Angie comes down, I'll just say a quick word of introduction. We're preparing by April to transition to a new agenda management system. This is a team effort. Angie and Linnea and Vernon have all worked on looking at options and a transitional plan. And we're excited to share this with you. This is a web-based system. We think it provides some real improvements and benefits in terms of ease of use for you, for our staff, but especially our public as they view the materials and the content that you are considering as you make decisions. So Angie's going to walk you through, I think she's going to lead this primarily, and glad to get you oriented to it and get you prepared for April when this will be our system.
Well, hi, everybody. It is really exciting for staff to be able to come and be at this stage with you and take you into, we're actually getting a new system and get into that stage. So the first thing you want to do is make sure you're on your surface. No, no Twilight Zone at all. So does, is everybody logged in? And are you on this page where you have Civic Clerk? So if you're not there, you either double-click on the, on the purple square that is now on your, on your desktop, or you open your Google for Ms. Margaret. If you are having problems, you need help, raise your hand. Okay. Can, can you tell she's taught before?
Kind of bossy, huh?
Okay. Yeah, go ahead, log in there. Oops, sorry, yep. This is a very interactive item. Don't log in yet. I haven't told you you're logging in yet.
Four or five minutes, you love going.
I'm not going to log in.
Under the third screen. Get out of that one.
So does everybody have?
This is not a good idea to have on live television. Watching.
We're, we're done now.
We're all humans.
Could we just end the meeting?
This isn't my fault, this is Windows.
We could just end the meeting.
I don't know whether it does or not, it's a good question.
You're, you're all here together, Ed.
But we're not discussing issues.
Just maybe they can focus on the slides rather than us.
Maybe you can just take. Windows.
Everybody, good?
Here, I'll do it on my iPad.
Is everybody in now?
Civic Clerk.
Don't try to log in yet. Unless you looked at the sheet and you saw that your username is your email address and your password is your email address.
And that'll, it'll, will it always be our email address?
We're going to go change our passwords right now, all together. You're going to pick something, you're going to pick something that you like. So to log in though, you have to do your email address as your username and your email address as your password the very first time. Are you logged in?
Do you know your email address?
Yep.
We know it, Margaret.
Isn't it your name, dot, your name?
Mm-hmm, the same. At FranklinTN.gov.
It doesn't like my username.
Yours is Beverly dot burger at FranklinTN.gov. I don't think Dana has a city email address.
He got it last, two weeks ago. I think it was, when he walked into IT. It doesn't, no, it doesn't.
Okay, so if you're having problems, just pair up with a buddy so we can show you. So we don't waste, we don't lose our time.
You have to use your email address for both of them. Yeah, it doesn't like my email address. Nobody emails me. I don't either. Because it's pain, it's pain to get into it. Hey, how about if I copy and paste it? We like it, everyone likes that. Oh, wait a minute. This is, this is on Mac, so.
We're going to pair up.
She tried. I watched, I watched.
We're going to do it on the screen, so most things you'll be able to see if you can't actually get in. Otherwise, pair up with a buddy. All right, so this is, this is Civic Clerk. This is, it's a web-based product, so you don't have to have an app on your computer. So you can get into this on your Surface, you can get it into it on your phone, you can get in on any device. So that's a, one of the nice benefits of, of this, is that if you don't have your Surface, you can use another item to get in to your agenda. So we're going to go through a couple of things. The first thing we're going to do is show you how to change your password. If that overwhelms you right now, you don't have to do it at this moment, and I can help you later. But I want to show you how. So go up into the upper right-hand corner where your name is. Click on the dropdown. You see how you get account settings, email preferences, and help videos that comes in there? You're going to click account settings. And here's where you're going to type in your old password, which is the one I just gave you today. And then you're going to type your new password two times. You don't have to do that right now. We can, we can deal with it later, okay? If somebody's comfortable and you want to just hurry up and do that right now, go for it. If you need a little help, just don't even do that right now. Click back on the bottom left where it says agendas to get back to the list of agendas. So that's kind of your home button. To find all your agendas that are out there and published for you is this bottom left. Where you're going to click agendas. All right, so this is how you, you're going to have all the published agendas available to you right here. The newest one's always going to be on the top. So you'll see, we created a fake Board of Mayor and Alderman agenda for today. In order to see the, the items before the meeting even starts, you're at home, you're reviewing your items. You're going to click on the blue little arrow off to the right, and that's going to open up your whole agenda for you. Now remember, these are touchscreens, so you can also use your touchscreen to scroll up and down. Did everybody get into the agenda? Did you find, are you into this page right here? This one? Okay, on the bottom left-hand side, there's a, it says agendas. You've got to click on that. Okay. And then you find the meeting that you want to go to, and you click the, the blue arrow on the right-hand side to get into the meeting that you want to look at for the records. We're doing the first, the top one that has today's date. Did you get in?
This, this proclamation of awesomeness refers to you, I suppose, Pearl.
Okay.
You can get in here. See, you hit the agenda. This comes up. And then you hit this arrow. Takes you to the agenda.
She in there? Okay.
And here's what she was talking about, changing your password.
Okay, so if you're not there, go, just go ahead and watch my screen if, if it's a little hard to navigate through, and we can do a step-by-step later together. So you're, you're in your agenda. You'll see you have your call to order, invocation, you scooch down. You see the white items are, are items that are actually going to be voted upon. So they're actually, agenda items are white. Scooch down. Here you see under new business, we have a resolution 2020 dash, dash XX. Go under consent items. We have a few different items on there, too. So we're going to open up an item because we want to see what is in that item. We want to read more about it. So I'm going to open up the procurement award, again, touching the blue arrow off to the right. So this blue area right here.
You see that?
You're good. Right, see that? Click on that. Now this is all your information about the item. So you have your title. You have your attachments. So the first item, the first attachment you're always going to have is your item report, if one even exists. So that's going to be, that's like your staff report. That's where your staff is going to write in your information. So go ahead, you can open up that item report if you want to. It's just a single click. And now you have your item report. So you have your subject, you have your purpose, background, financial, recommendation, all the same stuff you're used to being able to see.
Don't leave that screen. See, it says, "I have something to say about this." Is that where you put your notes on that one?
Yeah, so I made this note earlier today. And you can move it around.
So do you just click on it to get a note, a note box?
Yeah, I'm going to show you right now. So let's say.
I saw on the back.
Yeah, so let's say you're looking at this step, this item report right here. Up on the top, almost all the way to the left, is a little thing that says annotate. So you can click on that.
Annotate.
Annotate. On the top, close to the left-hand side, in the blue bar. So now here you have the option. You can highlight, you can make text boxes, you can do just freehand drawing, you can make circles, you can make squares, lines, you can make arrows. So I just used the highlight function, clicked on the highlight, and then I highlighted a section that I wanted to pull out and make sure that during the meeting, I remembered where it was that I wanted to look at.
Redoes this, do you, do you keep those notes? Because now, the way it is, if you, if, whenever your, whenever the agenda's updated, then.
I'll have to double-check on that one. I think it stays, but let me double-check, okay?
That's weird.
Okay. And if you want to do a text box, you hit the little T for text box. You draw in whatever you, wherever you want it to be. You put in nonsense. You can take this box and you can move it around to different areas of your agenda. And so you can go ahead and play with that annotation section more yourself. The one thing you want to make sure to do to keep it is to make sure you hit that save button.
Where's that?
It's on the upper right-hand side. Whoops, it just closed on me. Because I touched it. The upper right-hand side, right next to the X, it says save and exit.
Wait a minute, where are you?
On the upper right, right under the blue bar.
Oh, up and right, I'm sorry. I'm looking left. Okay, got it.
Oh, yeah. Linnea wanted me to show you this one, too. This is pretty cool. One of their things is a stamp annotation. So you hit that, and then you have a different types of stamps that you have available.
Where was your stamp?
It's right here in annotation. It's this one right here.
Okay. The little box, the little person box.
The top. Kind of looks like an old-fashioned ch-ch stamp.
Oh, yeah. That looked like a person on there. Stamp.
And then a box pops up, and you have the option to say approved, reviewed, rejected. I'm seeing you guys use most often maybe the reviewed one, because you want to tell yourself that you have done, that you've looked at this document. So you don't lose your, you don't lose track of whether or not you looked at it and reviewed it.
Yeah, that's good. So, so run that by me again. So you hit that stamp, and it brings you up a box, okay? And then you can select reviewed on there?
Yep, you pick, you can pick reviewed, approved, whatever it is you want to have it say.
All right, and then just hit it, and it comes up.
This is your use.
Right, right. I like that.
It doesn't show to anybody else's.
That's good.
I mean, you can certainly bring a text box up, too, but I kind of like this little stamp. It's all in red, it's really obvious. And just make sure you hit save and exit for whatever you do.
Is there a box, when you, when you bring that up, is there a way to write your own message in there as well? Or you just have to select from certain ones?
No, the text box. You have to use the text box if you want to write your.
Yeah, but you have approved, review, is there something else?
With the stamp, it says approved, reviewed, and I think it's denied, rejected. Thank you, rejected.
I can't see it, so.
But on the text box, you can write anything if you put a text box in there. Okay? So go ahead and save and close out of there if you were in there. Go back to your actual item. Another thing that's going to be handy for you is you have the ability to star an item for yourself, something you want to make sure that you, that you don't miss during the meeting. In this upper right-hand corner, you see where there's a little star? You click on that, make the whole box yellow. Then when you go back to the agenda, it has a yellow star next to it.
And what is the purpose of that again?
If you want to draw your attention to an item because you know you wanted to say something about it, and during the meeting, you don't want to forget and let it pass by. Maybe if you made some notes on the item, you want to make sure that, that you don't miss it. There's another spot that you can make notes on, on the item in general. So let's say you don't want to make notes on the attachment. Below the attachments, you have a box that says notes private, and those are notes for you to make to yourself. It doesn't go to anybody else. So before I wrote up, I wrote in there, I marked up the item report.
That's a Nazi moron, isn't it?
Obviously, be smart about what you say, but it doesn't get published out with the agendas. This is a note for you to use for yourself. Yes, as always, be smart about what you type in there. So you can write anything you'd like, whatever it is, whatever thoughts and stuff you have, and that one auto-saves. So that one, you don't have to go find that save button on that. Okay? So then hit the, the top left button that says agenda details, and it'll take you back to all the different pieces of your agenda. Now, if you starred any of your items, you're going to have a yellow star next to it like I do. And see how that shows up? And then this is also, this is, obviously on this, you can just jump down to an item on the bottom. You can jump around in your agenda just by, by going back to this item, the agenda details, and just clicking on the yellow arrow for the item that you want to go to. I'm seeing more yellow? It's probably just because you didn't star anything yet. So these are my, these are my yellow stars. So you'll, you'll have your own ones for what other items you want to, to star. Okay, what questions do we have to this point?
I'm having a little trouble with the star.
Okay. So let me go back into an item, and I'll show you where to do that.
What if it's blue instead of yellow?
On the left-hand side, it will always be yellow.
Well, my star turned blue.
It's on the right, well, we clicked it.
Here, let's make you bigger. The yellow, the star's going to be over here.
So, show, show me how.
You just did a favor. Here, let me, here, watch my screen.
Okay.
Let me go back. So we're back on the agenda itself. Go find an actual agenda item, so something that's white, not gray.
Okay.
The yellow, or the blue arrow, excuse me, to the right, click on that to go into the agenda item.
Okay.
So are you seeing something like this now?
Oh, I see. I was looking.
We didn't go into the item.
We didn't go into that. I got it now.
Okay.
Good.
And then in the upper right-hand corner of that item, if you hover over that little, it was a gray star, if you hover over it, it turns yellow. When you click on it, the whole box is yellow. That means that you've selected it as one that you want to have starred. Does that make sense?
I think the star I was clicking on was for a bookmark for the website.
So do you click on it again, does it go away?
Yes. If you move your cursor off of it. What other item, what other questions do you have at this point? Nope.
You're using it in April.
April. Yes, we will take care of that. I, IT is, IT is here. We will, we will help solve all these problems in a few minutes. Okay, any questions on how you review items before a meeting? Does this kind of make sense where you can go through, you can open your item, you get to see your attachments? We'll leave these up here, these pretend ones up here, so that you can kind of go in there and practice a little bit before you get to a real meeting. Okay? Right, the password you changed in Civic Clerk is only for Civic Clerk. Okay. One more thing that I want to show you on this part before we move into practicing a live meeting, is on the bottom, a little bit to the right, is a tab called notes. So go ahead and click on that.
Notes.
Notes. It's blue on my screen right now. Do you see where it is? Go ahead and click on that. If you made any notes, the agendas that you made notes on are going to be listed on the top. If you click on your blue arrow to the right of the agenda you want to look at, so today's agenda, and you click on that, it's going to give you a summary of all the notes you made for that entire agenda. So, that's notes in the note section, in that note box. So not notes that you made on your agenda items, but if you made any notes in the note box, then they will show up here, and you'll have some to look at. We'll, we'll practice it. But here it says what the item was. It says, it gives me a quick, what did I even say in my note? And then I can use this blue arrow to jump right to that item. And you may find this more useful, you know, probably not during the meeting, because it might get a little confusing as far as where we are, but when you're reviewing ahead of time and you're trying to see, kind of look at all the things you've done. Or if you're like, I made a note on something, what was it? I can't remember which one it was. This is a quick way to be able to see all your notes. Already. Okay. We are going to... Now we're going to go into a fake live meeting. So go back to your agendas. Click on this bottom left-hand little button that says agendas, that I have blue right now. Click on that. And do you have Board of Mayor and Alderman? And do you have a green box that says join meeting? Go ahead and click join meeting. You're going to pick that you're present and voting. So click on that and hit save. So I have three people attending so far. You're absent? Okay, I will mark you as absent, Bev. Bev is absent. Dana's absent? All right.
The mayor is present.
I see that Brandy is here, Ken is here, Ann is here, and Scott is here.
Could you see me if I was somewhere else?
We're gonna keep it, keep everything simple, to begin with, okay?
He have a waitlist.
I can see it's gonna be a tie vote, because I've got four that can't get on their computer.
We're not gonna do that.
We're not gonna do that.
I got in trouble.
So right now, you did not get in trouble. Okay, so right now, Ann made a motion, Scott seconded to approve this item. I just did it in the background for you. So normally the mayor will ask for a motion, you will say your stuff, and I'm gonna record it back here. And then we're going to open it up as, for a vote for everybody. Did anybody get a vote box that popped up in front of them?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead and do your vote, if you got a vote box. This, this, yep, but this is just a fake vote, so you can vote anything you want.
I like the raising hands, I can.
We will still verbalize.
You're not gonna just sit at your console and do that, you're gonna still.
Absolutely.
Your vote.
Absolutely, thank you for clarifying. Thank you for clarifying.
It's probably more for staff to keep both of what we.
Staff and for the public, to, to be able to see.
Will this livestream out?
It has the ability to. We're, we're working, we're doing baby steps, though. So we won't be livestreaming the vote tally out immediately. So here I have that, that Brandy abstained, and then we have three yeses, so I'm gonna save it as a passed item. And then we move on to our next item. So that's, it's just that simple.
I didn't realize it would be this simple when we started this.
You'll get comfortable, you'll get comfortable. And I know we're, we've run out of time for tonight, but we are doing another training during the joint meeting with Planning Commission, in the next Planning Commission meeting. So bring your devices for that, we'll do this again, you'll get another chance to practice. If you want to come into the office and we can talk through and work through some stuff, do one-on-one time, I'm available to do all of that, just let me know.
I would like to skip to one of those.
Yep, absolutely, just let me know so I can make sure that, that I'm here and available for you when you show up. And I'm happy.
Yeah, we will do that.
No, you can just close it.
Nothing is for keeps.
We will get you through this, we've, we've got, we've got a month. So we'll get, we have lots of time, we'll get you all set up.
It's a good thing this stuff is here, because this thing just died.
Oh dear.
It's literally.
I'm assuming everyone.
Months, we're fine until the.
Say you're seven o'clock.
Our staff has a different view. Mm-hmm. Yep.